We're gonna call this meeting to order. It is the Duluth Public Schools ISD 709. It is Thursday, January 5th, and it is our regular committee of the whole meeting that happens the first Thursday of the month. So I call this meeting to order, and I'll turn to Clerk Zdowski for a roll.
Member Derek Geter.
Present.
Member Kirby.
Here.
A member Lasse Kemp.
Here.
Chair Lowfal.
Here.
Member Oswald.
Here.
I am here. Member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Magus.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
And, let's see, Finance Director Simona is excused. HR Director is excused. Board Secretary Paquette is excused. Board Secretary Carroll.
Here.
And that will round off the roll.
Thank you. So again, Committee of the Whole, I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Thank you Chair Lowfal, and good evening everyone. I will quickly transition it over to Director Larva, who will walk us through the 23, 24 course changes for our high school.
Director Larva. High School and Middle School.
And Middle School.
It's our secondary registration course catalog that I'm here. This is an annual update to the school board. So every year about this time, I do come to the school board and share with you any course changes that will be occurring for the upcoming school year. Just to let you know a little bit about the timeline of this process, I know I came to you talking about secondary schedules way back in the bottom. The reason is because of this. Like, we have to get our course catalogs to print usually around this time. And then we start registration in February with middle schoolers, and then we have high school registration like the first week of March. So I mean, it seems really early, but you know, this is what we need to do as far as our timeline goes in order to make everything happen. So the process is that we start talking about course changes with our content specialists. So in the spring when we start for next year, fall in '24, '25, we'll start having those conversations now in the spring with our content specialists. Like, what are we foreseeing coming out that we need to make some course changes? So when we go to the middle school, you'll see some things about science. Those are related to the science standards. So the science specialists and the content specialists we have for science is aware of those changes, and they'll start talking about, okay, we need to make sure that we have our courses aligned because of the new standards and this change that had happened. And then we start working through that content specialist first. We go to guidance counselors and principals after that. There's a several set of mediums where we're going through what people are asking for courses changes, and then an approval process, like we have conversation. It's not just me making decisions. I want you to know that it is definitely a lot of people that are involved in our course catalog changes that we're making. So to get started, you'll see at the top we have high school course catalog changes. We have several course catalogs. One of them that we have is the high school course catalog, which is 9 through 12. It's the big course catalog that we create. We also, for ease of our new incoming freshmen, we do actually give them a revised condensed version of our course catalog that is more specific to freshmen. We don't give them the courses in the course catalog they choose from that are for 10th grade and up to seniors specifically. So our course catalog is really quite beefy. It's many, many pages. And so we try to condense that down for our freshmen coming in, just to make it easier for them to see what their choices are. And then we also have a course catalog that is specific for middle school. But the 9th grade one is just related to the high school one, but just letting you know that we do have a couple different course catalogs that are out there. So we're gonna look specifically at our high school course changes. You're going to see at the top, we have some things under general electives that are related to career and work experience. So this is a need that we have coming out of our Perkins funding source that we have. So we are in a year right now, over the summer, where we had to redo program approvals for Perkins. And so we've worked with our CTE teachers to create the programming that they're going to be doing. We have to make sure that we have our articulations aligned. We may have to make sure that we have our parent advisory groups, you know. So all these things that come with Perkins. But one component of Perkins, and we have to do all this for approval, so that we can get the funding. There's funding attached to CTE. So we have to get the funding, right? But one of the components that they're really promoting and trying to expand upon with the Perkins is that whole concept of work experience, work-based learning. And so there's a lot more out there right now about work-based learning and having experiences for students where they're getting credits for work that they're doing internship type of experiences under CTE. Not just credit for going and working at Hardee's or McDonald's. I'm talking about like being in the engineering program and having a relation, the school having a relationship with an entity where this person can go, a student can go and do some work for a company. And so we're really promoting that more. We did hire this past year a work-based learning coordinator at a halftime position. And so we recognized that we needed to have some of these courses set up. So as we branch into this area, that we have the courses that align for those students. So next year, we'll be able to have Career Seminar 2. They have to have like a seminar course first before they start their internship. And then we have the CTE work experience course. So those are new, but very exciting to us. Also, as part of that Perkins realignment and program approvals, we've done some aligning of our classes that we've had in the culinary area, the family consumer science, tourism, hospitality area. We do have a new teacher this year who had come to us from another school district, and she had, she was promoting this international cuisine. She's ready to go with it, and so we thought that that was a good fit. You'll see later on that we're deleting a few of our tourism and hospitality courses. And we can talk a little bit more about that when we get to that deleting part 2. So that's part of that alignment.
At both campuses? These are at both?
Well.
Both high schools?
Right now, Denfeld is where we are able to have classes. We only currently have one teacher. We're struggling with finding the teaching staff to do it, and we do need to re-. Not re-, I don't know the word for it, but. At East, we had the restaurant, and we really need to move away from the restaurant model and move more towards the deli services model that they've been running at Denfeld. And so that's what we would like to see happen at East as well. But we really have been struggling with finding a person to teach that. And with our career technical education classes that we have, there are really people coming to us a lot of times without teaching degrees. They're coming to us from industry. And it's a, it's a challenge to get people who are interested in that, you know, they might not have that pedagogy, that teaching pedagogy behind them and how to support them. And so I think there's, there's just bigger challenges in order to get people to come in and help us with that programming. So right now, we currently just have things at Denfeld, but they're in the block schedule then, so that we can get students from East to Denfeld if they're choosing to take those courses.
Okay.
And so, but we would like to work it out so that we have it at both. We just don't have the people yet. And the registration has been greater at Denfeld for these courses as well. The next one is really exciting for me. You see, it says art, and it says college in the school ceramic. Okay. This is kind of our last puzzle piece that we needed. And really, this is a celebration for me right now. This is the last puzzle piece that was needed in order for us to have students potentially graduating from Duluth Public Schools with an AA degree. So we needed to have this, this component, art. And so it has come through, I think the agreement might be with UMD, if I'm remembering correctly, I think it's with UMD. They were proposing this being put out. So we do have, we do have one teacher we know for sure who can teach this. So we are going to offer and see what happens. But you know, we're trying to make sure that we have that pathway for students that be able to graduate with that AA under their belt. So that is a new thing for us. So that's kind of a celebration that I wanted to share with all of you.
We want you to celebrate. That's awesome.
Yeah, that's really awesome.
Thank you.
It's the last little piece for us.
Yeah.
So they're missing that one credit in order to graduate with the AA. And now they have that ability to do that. So, yeah. The next course that I have on here is also very exciting. All my courses here have been so exciting. I think you'd be really excited about this one too. So this came to us from the College Board. They came to us with a proposal that they were wanting to see an advanced placement computer science course that was targeting our students that may not normally be interested in a course like this. They targeted Denfeld with funds attached to it. So there's a grant that was written and approved. And because of how we do things, we're doing it at East and at Denfeld. We have to offer it for at least three years and encourage our students that, basically are black students. It's really targeted, targeting our minority students, but specifically our black students, and trying to encourage and get more of this advanced computer science principles in so that we can try to build a better pathway. So it's a new course that comes from a grant. And we will for sure have it at least for the next three years, and we'll see where we go with this. But I know that Denfeld is very excited about it, and I know Jerry Sari took the lead on writing the grant. And so she will, you know, promote when we go through our registration process and see what we can do with this one, so.
So who teaches that?
It'll be a business teacher. So right now, I think our business teacher is on an OFP, out of field placement. So, but we'll be seeking, you know, every year we're seeking.
Because isn't that kind of a unique teaching degree? Is this kind of, I don't know where you get just the marketing degree. It usually is coming out, you know, we used to have marketing. It used to be a big part of our high school offerings was that business instructor that did shorthand and did, you know, sports marketing and, you know, more of that. And I don't know where that degree comes from. But can you tell, what is advan-, what is, what is computer science? What is that? What are you, what are we gonna be teaching in that class?
Coding is one of the things that comes out of computer sciences. We have an opportunity with the College of St. Scholastica to do more work with them as well. And I think that, that this is also trying to tie in a piece of that. We had some conversation last year about a grant with CSS. We didn't go forward with that grant, but this is also some work that's gonna be aligned with some of that work from CSS. And coding is a big part of that.
Just say the word. I don't really know what coding is, but.
Programming.
Programming.
But you know, I do hear coding all the time.
Is there a hardware?
Isn't our little kindergartners in first and secondary doing coding with little mouses? And I thought I saw a picture of that.
Yeah, bots or whatever, these little, yeah, little tiny robots.
I'll have Cam to tell you about it.
Yeah.
Because he's just into it right now.
Very cool.
Is there a hardware side of this too?
We checked with the technology department, and it felt like we were good to go with what we have currently in one of our business labs. I think the business labs.
With more software.
I think there's more software component pieces of it. And then, yeah, I don't think we're purchasing like any little robot, robotic things or anything right now with that, so, yeah.
Can you say a little bit more about the teacher that's going to do this? Is that a business teacher? Do they have?
Yeah, currently our business teacher, because we, you know, we posted for business teacher at Denfeld. And we had a new business teacher this year also at East. The business teacher at East is licensed fully for business, whatever they needed for their licensure under their licensure program. But the one at Denfeld currently is, like, they have to get a tier one licensure. They're not, they're not licensed as a business teacher. So we would be reposting and seeking for them.
But I thought to teach these, for example, AP chemistry, you need an advanced degree of some sort. Is that not the case with this?
Not with this. That would be more of our AP and CITs. All of those are different. This is just more of a more advanced coding kind of thing for, you know, computer sciences, not necessarily a high school credit or articulated credit type of thing that you're getting out of AP or college in the schools.
Do they take out an advanced placement test after this?
No.
Yes.
Oh wait, yeah, this.
So this is, I was gonna say this.
This is an AP class.
This is an AP class.
Yeah, yeah, so we'd be seeking the appropriate licensure for it, yeah.
Because we meet the College Board, that's why I'm like, this isn't AP class.
Yeah, this is an AP class, yeah. Sorry about that. I usually see it as AP. But we would be seeking the correct licensure for that.
You've got the one at East?
Yeah, he would just have to, he'd have to go through the, they do some training.
College training, yeah.
For their teachers.
And what we could do is circle back, since this is one of, at least interest, we can always circle back and provide some insight on what we talked during this class and so forth.
Okay, thanks.
It's exciting.
Yeah. And then the next one is very exciting too. All of our courses that we're adding, we're adding for a real important purpose. And this one, we've already put into place, but we needed, we had the actual stuff at one site, and on the other, we were like, we officially needed to put it in a course catalog, so we added it, even though it is something that kids have been in this past year. This is the PACE Lab is what we call it, the Practical Assessment Exploration System. It's very cool. If you go over and wanna see what they're doing, they have these little kits, and the special education kids are learning real skills, like work skills, through these exploration type of kits that they're doing. So it is a lab. It's not CTE, but it's kind of like that beginning skill building set of piece that kind of comes along with CTE. And so we had a lab at Denfeld, and we've introduced a lab at East.
Same teacher, right? I think it's key leader most.
I can't remember who's teaching it at East. I'm not sure. Yeah, so, yeah. But that's really a cool thing for our teachers. And we did add them at the end of last year, after we had, you know, already done our course catalog updates. We wanted to just make sure that that was, that you're aware that we'd add that course as well. And I believe that was something that Jackie Ward had worked on when she was still here and had, I think there was a grant that was attached to that one as well.
I know the teacher at Denfeld is very willing to give you all a little, a little tour and a little introduction to her, the stations and the kids and stuff. She's really open to them, so.
I ran into her in the hallway and introduced myself. Oh, can you come see my lab?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I would come see your lab.
Pretty exciting, yeah.
Very exciting to come. And it is cool. I watched a kid actually come in and use it, and I'm like, oh wow, this is, this is the cool skills that they're building.
For the additional classes or new classes, are there opportunities for students to provide input on classes that might be of interest to them? So, you know, especially around elective classes?
So, you know, you mean like through process? Are you thinking through process? You know, things come up to us, but it usually bubbles up from like counselors, like we're seeing real interest here in this area. We have not formalized a process where we've like gone to students and have asked. But, you know, as, as I've been doing more of our work with the Centers for Educational Leadership and the work that we're doing on street level data and having conversations with kids, you know, I have gotten into some spaces, especially the Pathways to Teaching course at East. I had spent some time with them. And, and they are interested, like, who sets the, you know, they have all these questions about things and stuff. And I know that we've talked at the secondary level about like how we can bring in more of that, like having the students' eyes on things, so that we're offering them the choices that they need and that they want, or that they desire. You know, the thing is, is that we have to have licensed te-, I mean, there's, it's more than just like, oh, a kid wants a class on this. I mean, there's the licensure, the STAR review. We have to align our licenses to STAR for our data reporting. We have to make sure that it's lining to our standards, you know. But we wanna make sure that we're offering things that are of interest to kids for pathways to careers outside of school. So, yeah, it is an area that we do need to work harder on. I would agree. We're really starting this year to listen to our students a lot more. So I mean, it's just kind of like we're at that ground level of really getting in and digging in and having those conversations with kids.
Well, again, I've just really been impressed with the way that our leadership has structured your organization, that we now have, you know, some, you have some staff below you that are helping you with curriculum and curriculum development. You're working mainly with our middle school and high school curriculum and principals. We've got Brenda, you know, so we're really paying attention to our curriculum, which is always kind of, I feel in my background, has always been a place where it's just we haven't been able to just grab hold of it and really, so the adding to the catalog and the, you know. But, but teachers also have to get on board. You know, we forget as teachers that all of your curriculum requests that you do send to them, they have to be ready in December for some of that. And so that means they have to be meeting in their PLCs with their content people to even vision what might look like a year from now, or even two years from now. So that whole process of educating staff too about, if you're, if you wanna bring forward something, if your students wanna bring forward something, you gotta start talking about that in October, November.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, so it's just a time, an awareness of the process.
Yeah. I would also actually encourage to approach like middle schoolers for what they wanna see in high school, because you know it's going to take two or three years to develop the course. You know, just like the computer science course that, you know, I remember being solicited by St. Scholastica, you know, with these grant funds and that kind of stuff, a couple of years ago. So I know it takes time. And that way, it can be in place for when, in a timely fashion, for the, for the right students that dreamed it. Because right now, I see, you know, 11th graders or seniors saying, I wanna do this. And by the time it comes around, they're done. Yeah. Yeah.
And the reason I serve is because I, like you shared, we are starting to make sure we consider the desired daily experiences of students, and we're talking about enrichment courses for, in this case elective courses that could be offered, because I'm thinking about, as always, our interracial rates, our African-American students, our Canadian students, you know, making sure that, you know, they see themselves in the curriculum, that we are, you know, mindful of things that might be of interest to them. So when they are selecting their courses, of course, they have to select the core classes, you know, like grade math, social studies, and so forth and so on. But then, what about the elective courses? The things that might pique their interest and get them excited and they would actually enroll in versus having to, again, pick things that are traditionally being offered, because that's what we always do. So we wanna make sure we are.
If you're gonna fund it and give some FTE to go along with it, that's a whole nother conversation. Because we do have a lot of options that are in our course catalog that we have students register for, that we can never offer those classes because we just don't get enough students to register for them. Like, I'm gonna throw accounting out there as an example. There are kids that are really interested in being accountants, but there's not enough of them to fill the whole class when you, we have certain FTE, and then we have eight kids who sign up for that. Well, we're not gonna offer that class. We're gonna put that FTE into another area. So we talk a lot about one-offs when we're having conversations, like, how is this, I mean, it's great to have this class, but it's gonna be a one-off. So how is that gonna impact, you know, are we gonna get the kids here in the FTE? You know, so it is, it's a really big balancing act. And I would love it if we could offer more choices. But that, that is a commitment, again, with SMFTE as well, so.
Absolutely. So, if you did?
I was just gonna say how much I appreciate your, your work here, Director Larva. I think that you've always shown so much leadership with the principal supervision and coaching, but your background as well, being deeply steeped in curriculum is really, really helpful here. And I think that when you're, I think the, the work you're doing really is thinking about those desired daily experiences and the fact that you're also incorporating that street level data conversation with students into the work you're doing. I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate your dedication to detail.
Thank you. So moving along here, otherwise you're just gonna have me all night long. We have some changes, and some of them are very minor changes, things such as course descriptions, just changing maybe the grade level. We have conversations when we, when we meet together about like, are we really offering this to 9th and 10th graders? Or is it only 11th and 12th graders that are getting into these courses? Maybe we just make that change, you know. So we do, we do do a few things like that. So you'll see like engineering, under that area, we had automotive, basic brakes and engines. Well, it fills up, and we're never really getting 9th graders that are able to take it. So let's make that change to 10th, 12th grades. And I, I don't wanna say not get their hopes up, but you know, we really aren't putting any 9th graders in there anyways. So we did some changes that way in some of those classes that we had. And that was also part of our program approvals, like trying to clean some of that stuff up that we were doing. The pathways to, pathways to teaching, we, this is an oversight more than anything. It really is a college in the schools program. We have an agreement with, with St. Scholastica. I don't know why it never was identified initially as a college in the schools program. We wanna call that out, hoping to get more kids to say, oh, I'm getting college credit for this course, because I think that will help, help with that course, getting those students interested in it. And really, this is our version of a growing our own program. And if you ever wanna visit, a very cool classroom space, Allison and Ed Lewis over at Denfeld do it there. And then Susan over at East is doing it, Susan Schmidt. And those are, those are kids that are, it's a social justice education kind of class. So they're asking, they're asking me the tough questions. I mean, they really are. So it's a really cool class to get into, if you wanna hear voices of students and what they think is important. That's a really cool class. So we're just changing it to make sure that it's reflecting that they're getting college credit for that one.
Are students taking that as a zero hour or it's an elective?
It's an elective, but it's during the day. Yeah, so I think it's like right after win this year, fourth hour at East or something, so, yeah.
And so what kind of numbers are they getting with their classes?
That's, that's, no. They're getting a lot more at Denfeld than they have at East. I think part of it is at Denfeld, it's easier for those students to get that experience in a classroom. So part of what they're doing is they're going to an elementary site as well, and they're, they're putting in some hours in a classroom and supporting the classroom and kids and learning, you know, learning what it takes to be inside of the classroom. And that's really easy. Denfeld, they can walk over to Laura McCorr there pretty easily. East, on the other hand, has been more of a challenge, like what school site to partner with and to get the students there. And we wanted to, you know, we're talking about it, you know, the social justice piece. So they're, they're going to Myers-Goethes. You know, they're trying to get there, and it's just a little bit harder. COVID set things back for us with this course. Like, it was building and building and building, and then we had COVID, and they couldn't get in those classrooms. And, and so our numbers have dwindled. But the district thankfully, Superintendent Bonds, last year we asked and said, can we just make this a commitment? We wanted to grow your own piece of this. And our numbers just aren't quite there to run this section. But we did add a little FTE so that we could continue that and try to encourage that class to grow, so.
And then this had been advertised as a college credit previously, so that should help your numbers a little bit.
I would hope so. I'm like, why, why isn't it college in the schools? Joan's like, I don't know. I'm like, well, it should be. We should have it listed that way. So that, that's, that was just an oversight.
I could see where that might limit as well. You know, if we're growing our own, it doesn't, you know, college, an AP class sometimes sets someone back thinking they, they can't do it. And unless it's marketed and the teachers are really passionate about getting out and showcasing some of that, maybe going and talking to 10th grade classrooms to see that potential, I could see where calling it an advanced placement might deter some, especially our students of color that don't often see themselves in an AP classroom. So we're gonna, you know, it can, it certainly should serve, you know, some to entice them, although that's also, there's a lot of AP opportunities. So, you know, if this, if this one class is offered at the same time that an AP history or calculus or some other AP, it then can, cannot be as, as enticing, so. But we'll get there. You're right, I'm thankful for the administration. It is a grow your own. This is something the legislators are eager to see and talk about. So, you know, we, we wanna promote that our district is, you know, committed to growing our own.
That's right. Even though, speaking of growing your own, I mean, I've been connected specifically with this course. We just recently applied for a grant. I think that was the day you were probably there.
We're, we're, okay.
You know, I think that was, Kayla, what was this, the grant committee? The Grow Your Own through Nate Smith, so was that two weeks ago? Or, so two weeks ago, we applied for a grant through MDE, Teach in Minnesota. And it's specifically to attract teachers of color to come in and work in, you know, Minnesota. And we applied for that grant because we are trying to figure out a way to hopefully attract and incentivize staff of color to come here. And specifically in the form of. And specifically in the form of, um, I'll say it here, you know, for bonuses or, you know, that can be provided for salaries and so forth.
Because if we're gonna ask somebody to come and live in our, in, in two feet of snow, you know.
It looks like 20 from my viewpoint.
Because of that though, I would venture a guess that it's always done a pretty good job of growing their own. And if we look at our staff, I'm sure there's a number of teachers, elementary, middle school, high school teachers that have graduated from IS709 High Schools.
Yeah.
And so that's a good thing. And, but at the same time, I don't think we want to lose that. You know, we want to, it's in this day and age we're living in right now, we need to capture many of these students that might be interested in going into education and getting them started here and keeping them here. Something we need to continue to work on.
Yeah, two questions. One is, this is exciting. I, I like this whole, the concept when it began a few years ago on the pathways to teaching. How are we working with, um, the colleges on, um, kind of the, the whole grow your own concept with the colleges and maybe with this, uh, this class in terms of connecting the students that are going through this class with, here's your opportunity right near backyard. I, I, I was on a board at Concordia College when my daughter went there and they were doing some kind of unique things with, uh, Targa Morhad on growing your own teachers. And so I, I was just curious if we're.
Well, I know Allison Wood has, um, she does work Bound as well and she's also one of the teachers of this program at her school. And I, and I, so I don't know exactly how she's tying it in, but I, I do know that she, she is one of the big promoters of trying to get kids to go into college for the first time, like first time college stuff. So I know she, she works on that. Um, you know, I think that they're, um, her and Susan and Ed are trying to reestablish some connection again back up. There's somebody new at Saint Scholastica to really talk more about this program and build this program a little bit more. Um, but I, I'm unaware of what has happened with that, you know, at this point.
Okay. Okay. And then I have another question about something else. We go ahead.
Sure. Just related to that, we have had partnership and conversations with Saint Scholastica and UMD. And I know that Nate Smith is doing some work on, on grant writing related to expanding some of the grow your own work. But it is all connected, that pathways to education. And I think that they're really thinking about how can we offer as much, as many dual credit experiences for our students in general. But sometimes we are thinking about pipelines for other industries, like how are we getting, making sure we're getting kids into healthcare? What are we doing to get more welders? You know, how are we getting workers through SERIS? Those are all important, but we do have, have employment needs. And so it's, it's, it's really, um, great work that we're having courses for these.
That's exciting. Um, and then just with the automotive, um, is that offered at both East and Denfeld? I can't remember.
No, the automotive program is at Denfeld and again, it's on the block schedule. So students will go from East to Denfeld to get in that block.
Remember.
Yeah, I know that we are not the only school district doing pathways to teaching. And what are other places doing that are successful? Do we know that? In fact, I think when this first started out, there was a woman from Denver, maybe, maybe out loud. I think the.
She's from Colorado.
Right. DFT brought her and she was, um, very involved in setting this up nationwide. And so there's other people that are doing this and I think we need to look at.
I think the textbook initially comes from there that they were utilizing. So, yeah.
But I know Rochester is trying the same thing. What is, is there success? And if there isn't in what we're doing, if we're not getting many people, we have to look and see where there is success. And we can't be focused just on here.
Do you think some of the things where we are doing and exploring with, particularly college, Saint, Saint Scholastica, looking at, um, how can we take our, our professionals who are interested in gaining additional certification, becoming teachers? That's one thing that's a promising practice in other districts. Um, also sometimes you can do things like have, you know, if we have a full pathway where we're taking dual credit high school students and giving them that opportunity and then also maybe employing them in, in positions within the district while they're getting experience with students and getting credit. That's another thing that we've been, um, working on too. So there are some things that we have in the works and I actually think it's, it's, um, really exciting work that I've, it's kind of a subset area that I've been, always been really interested in. But I think that, that now that we're, I wouldn't say past the pandemic, but where we're able to focus on, on renewing focus on academics. It's something that we really are working to bring forward in a much more lively way than it's been in the past. It's important.
Who's responsible for it though? For doing all this other stuff? I mean, are just the teachers who are teaching or are you responsible for defining and expanding the program? I guess that's, it looks like it's kind of, I shouldn't say leaderless, but.
Rudderless?
Rudderless.
I think it's jointly owned, which sometimes becomes.
Rudderless, yeah.
Rudderless. And so I think that having, having a single person identified as the shepherd of that process, I know Nate Smith is doing quite a bit, but I'm not sure what your thoughts are, Mr. Harman.
Yeah, you're spot on with it. I mean, he's doing some parts of it, but at the end of the day, this is a course that's being offered at the school, you know, rely on the classroom teacher and your chairs to really move forward with any programmatic improvements that need to happen. Others can support and do those other outreach, just like Nate Smith or, you know, others can do some things. But really we rely on teachers and others to make suggestions for improvement to improve programming.
I think, I think member Kirby's question was more along the lines of who is leading the effort in the district to ensure that we have a full teacher pathway? That, you know, is it.
It doesn't really fall under CTE, so it doesn't fall under a program approvals or, you know, any of that. So, yeah.
We would explore that because again, I'm still gonna, we will explore that and move forward. At the end of the day, it's still going to come down to how it fits in our curriculum process. And, you know, we just have to develop it and move forward with it to ensure that it's happening.
All right. Um, another change that you'll see here in course description is for intermediate algebra. Um, we're deleting just the prerequisite being stated as algebra one. Um, and deleting this course is designed for students who have successfully passed eighth grade algebra one. Algebra one really is an eighth grade course and so it shouldn't, we're just taking that out of the, um, the secondary catalog because that is something that they're doing in eighth grade. You'll see that transition down into the deleted courses, algebra ones being taken out of the high school. Um, students that are maybe a little bit behind will end up taking school within a school math. You know, they'll take that up there, intermediate algebra, school within a school. And so we're not really using algebra one, so we're just taking that out of the high school. Um, and I think when we are looking at our math standards and some of the pathways, we want, we want to really revisit pathways for math, like to get to that calculus, the calculus, calculus stage. And we have, you know, like once, you have to get to advanced math before you, you know, like it becomes this thing. Like people are like, we have to be in intermediate algebra by the time we're in eighth grade. Otherwise you're never going to get to precalculus. And so this is just some cleaning up steps now, knowing that we're going to be revisiting the standards down the line in the future. And probably we'll have some remaining, you know, like it's not going to be algebra one anymore. Probably an eighth grade, probably eighth grade algebra. You know, and then we have intermediate algebra when they get to ninth grade or they move on. If they've already had intermediate algebra in eighth grade, they'll move on. So we're, we're going to be looking at the whole system. We just were cleaning some things up right now. And that was a recommendation by Ed Lewis, who is our content specialist in math, who's keeping his eye on what's going on at the state level as well. So. Um, again, the deleted courses, you'll see some things that are in hospitality and tourism, which is in our culinary arts. And so just redoing that program approval and, and trying to fix some things. So some of the classical line cooking, classical cooking, waiter, waitress being taken out. We're going to move more towards a deli model versus the restaurant model when we are, um, able to get them at both sites. But Denfeld is definitely moving more towards a deli model. So we have more costs around deli management in our course catalog already. We're just cleaning this up because of program approvals.
Is there a reason, I'm just curious is what the shift is? Is it just a change in the, what the industry needs or is it just?
Um, some of that, you know, I, I, I do feel like Danette can speak to this a lot more clearly than I, than I could. I know that there's just been a lot of concerns about that restaurant component as well at East High School, you know? And so I think that the model, the, um, the clock tower deli has been a really, a really popular model with students. And so I, I think we're just trying to realign a few things.
That makes sense.
But that would be something to probably talk a little bit more with her when she comes back to you during CTE month.
Perfect. Thank you.
Should we talk all about those program approvals? All right. Moving on to middle school, just to kind of keep us moving. We do have a few changes in science and that's really aligning to the standards. There have been some changes in when things are happening in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. So that's why we have the, the added courses. Um, we've known about them for a while. So we have life science and physical science being just a few little changes in what grade levels they happen at. Um, the one that is new and different, um, is the music one. We are going to be looking at having a general music class starting in grade seven. Um, we're not adding grade eight, but we're going to try this. Um, what we, what has been talked about for many, many years is that our music programming is all performance based. So kids don't have an option of music that's not band, orchestra or choir at the middle school level. And it is a requirement that they take music when we're taking a look at those standards. So they are, they're being told they have to be in a performing arts music program. Okay? And during COVID, boy, that was a problem. We had students that did not, I mean, they were trying to play egg carton instruments during COVID. I mean, it was really quite a challenge. And it brought it even closer to the, to the work of the music department. Like we really do want to have, they really want to have some sort of general music. So it's not having to be like a performance based music option. We would still require in sixth grade because the middle school model is exploratory. Kids should be trying things out. So we really want them to join choir, band or orchestra in sixth grade and have that experience in one of those areas. But when they get to seventh grade, some of those kids might be like, I'm really hating band. I really don't want to go to band. And, and you don't want it to be like a trigger. We'd rather have them maybe be able to take a general music class where they're not performing, they're not doing a concert, but maybe they're playing on the drums or they have, you know, ukuleles that they're, they're messing around with on a unit or something. So we, we have put this into the course catalog. Assistant Superintendent Bonds has said, yep, we will fund some curriculum writing and some instrument needs that we might have, like ukuleles aren't something that we normally have, you know, in the middle school. So we have, we have some needs there, maybe some drums or some different things that kids can do some exploratory things on. But it'll be more of a general music course. So those kids have another option. Currently, um, in eighth grade, there's a choice, like kids, it's advanced band or whatever. Kids are maybe taking a music, maybe not taking a music. This is all stuff that's kind of tied into that middle school schedule, you know, with the art standards and stuff. But this is something that we're kind of waiting on for that part to go through and that part's not going through. And so we, we still wanted this piece and so we added that in. Um, I had a conversation today with Jerry Upton, who is our content specialist for music. And they're getting plans together to do the curriculum writing and get some ordering taken care of so that we can start that for our kids. We just want them to have an option.
Will this be absorbed FTE wise within that music? It won't be an extra FTE?
No. So it'll be based on registration, just like any other other courses that we can offer. You know, they, they know that they'll still have a music course and we'll set it up kind of on the same schedule. So we know like this will be the blocks of time when they can have them, um, for seventh grade. And if a kid's not doing one of the performing, they, they choose not to do that, they would have to register for this and they'll just come out of whatever FTE. And all those teachers are, their licensures all fit, so it should just be like a tweaking of where the registration falls. Yeah.
Can I back up just a second to the sciences?
Yeah.
Because I thought we missed something. And I might have a question on the music bit too. But, um, so they aren't labeled here for what's what, but I'm assuming that again, when they're registering for courses, the life science stays at seventh grade.
I don't remember which grade level.
Physical sciences going into eighth grade.
Yes, yes. Because earth science moved.
Because earth science is getting deleted.
It's going to ninth grade.
And so that's going to ninth grade.
Yes, that's going to ninth grade. Yep. So, yeah.
And I'm sure the course catalog would indicate that for.
For the students, yeah, the 30, which grade levels go to which ones. Yeah.
And I, I do want to speak to the positive nature and/or, I think it's a great idea to have a general music class for our seventh grade students or for our middle school students. You know, because a lot of them, they don't want to sing and/or they just, an instrument isn't their thing or the instrument that's are offered there isn't their thing, or maybe a ukulele is their thing. And, you know, and my, uh, I own, well, one of my sons, uh, you know, he's an accomplished musician. I mean, you know, you've got kids that are taking piano lessons outside of school and, and they're great at it. But, you know, we don't accommodate that either. So whether, um, um, is music appreciation going to be part of this? Or are there kind of?
They're going to work through it. I said, I don't want it to be music theory. That's not, I don't want it to be all music theory. So there will be some components of some music theory that'll be embedded, music appreciation that'll be embedded. But then also some exploratory, different kinds of instruments, like you said, harmonicas, that could be a thing or ukulele. You know, something a little different so that, but they're not, they're not preparing for a concert. It's more just exploratory. So they're going to work on that. And I think that, um, Ben Ellison, um, and I think Kristen Passion both have expressed like wanting to help support and lead this. And so I know that they'll come up with some really good things that they'll do with their teaching with students.
YouTube videos and the next Justin Bieber.
Oh, I know. You never know. Add a little, add a little hip hop in there and kids will be really excited or, you know, create their own raps or whatever. They'll, they'll, they'll enjoy that. So, yeah.
That's, I think it's good.
All right. Um, and then the, um, changes in deletion of the courses at the middle school. We're just, um, changing life science is just the course description. There's something with life science and I think it's just changing into reflect the grade level that it did. And then the deleting of course, earth science is no longer going to be at eighth grade. So that's where that teacher comes in. So just cleaning it up and aligning it to the state standards.
How does that work for the, like the eighth grade class this year? Did they take earth science until next year? Will it just not be offered in the high school and then it'll be on the follow?
So the way that they planned it out, so if you talk to Aaron Salma, he had it really planned out. So, um, it, we're implementing based on when the test is being implemented at the state level. So we have the science MCA. So like third grade science this year was implemented because those kids in two years will be taking that fifth grade science test. So they were the first group that got started there and we had to change our sixth grade because when, in two years, they'll be doing the testing in eighth grade. So, so it's back, it's backwards for that. So the kids that are in the eighth grade now, they're taking the tests currently aligned to the standards with what they currently are, not with the new standards, if that makes sense. And so our seventh graders next year will be taking, our seventh graders this year will be taking the same MCA. It's not the new ones, but the seventh graders next year will be taking the new ones. That's why the changes are starting to happen. I know that's confusing.
And I think when Mr. Salma, right, he did a presentation, if you looked at Boardwalk, Boardwalk, he had the whole like, he had it all there, like when the standards, according to what test, he did it. So it's in there somewhere. I just, yeah.
I'll look for that. He seems super organized. It's one of my kids.
It was during COVID because we were meeting virtually. So it's during the time we were meeting virtually.
Okay. And then just another component of the science changes that are happening due to all this switching that they're doing. They're like, oh, licensure components might be a little off here. Um, and the information that I'm getting out of Helsby is that they're going to be making some, some accommodations for us at this point in time so that we should be okay. But we were looking at licensures and we think we're going to be okay, um, when these changes are happening.
I think most of your middle school science licenses are kind of broad.
Yeah, it's a high school.
Even five through nine or something like that. So they can teach physical science and earth science. I could, I, I was, I had a license like that.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, if they've been teachers for a number of years and they've graduated through an education program or you'll be here elsewhere, they either have like a five through nine license or a six through 12 license. I mean, there's, I think most of the guys that had the general science license that could teach anything, you know, that was offered 30, 40 years ago, they probably retired.
My, uh, my science, middle school license is 5'8" science. So, yeah. And does that mean I'm qualified to teach whatever the district says is 5'8" science? And does that mean I'm qualified to teach whatever the district says is five eight science?
Yeah. It's the ninth grade though where, where it gets, you know.
So I could, so I was qualified for, for earth science last year, but I'm not qualified for earth science in two years.
But it is the physical science, yes, you could have a ninth grade physical science teacher that if physical science moved down to the middle school, are they qualified to stay in the high school and do earth science? And, and that's where the.
Helsby's coming in to play with that, yeah.
Yeah, the, what we call the variance would need to be allowed to happen.
I think we're going to be okay, so I'd just let you know that. I know that there's some changes there. I make changes at the state level that impact things at the local level all the time.
Yes, they do, yes, they do.
Speaking of which, um, I know we talked about the um, the middle level art standards and, and the pause that we've had and, and as we continue to develop that, that schedule. And I had reached out to Commissioner Mueller in November, just saying, is there anything else we need to do to clarify this? I didn't hear back, um, and there was a change in Commissioner. And so I did reach out as well to Commissioner Jeff, who started this week to say, you know, this is where we were with more of a question of, please let me know if there's anything else we need to do. So I, I, I'm looking forward to hearing back, see if there's anything more. But I, I'm, we're under the assumption that we are good to go for next year at this point, until we hear other words. Favorite sentence?
I just have kind of a general question. I think it's wonderful that we're kind of basing some of these decisions on like student interests um, going forward. So what have been some of the most effective ways um, that you've gathered student feedback on courses so far? And maybe strategies moving forward for that?
Yeah, you know, I, I think the whole process of teamwork is, it was just our foundation of everything, you know. It in those groups, he met with middle school and he met with high school. And, you know, we're hearing those voices saying they want to have opportunities to do things that are more hands on. Well, that really leads into our career in technical education class, you know. So we can, we can make some of those alignments, you know, based off of some of that information. But I, I also think, you know, um, all of our principals right now are having conversations with groups of students because it's homework for us. So they are supposed to be doing it when they have homework. And so then we get together and we're talking about things. So right now it's been more of an informal type of process, but we are going through training throughout this year. And then, you know, we can take a look at, okay, what from our learning and our work with the Center of Educational Leadership and leading ethical schools and that street level stuff that we're doing right now, what, what of this should we systematize? And what do we, what do we need to do and how does that need to look moving forward? You know, I've already had conversations with, you know, Dale Uselman and Mike Phobie and Sally White, my curriculum team about, you know, as we're looking at the ELA standards and how we're just, where are we going to pull students' voices into this? Where are we going to pull um, community, where is the, like, the NAACP going to come in and, and give them, give a, but where is our tribe? So when we just have a consultation, where, where are we getting that, that piece back? Like, sharing what we're doing and also getting input and feedback on what we're doing as well. So, you know, it's just that learning and that training, starting to embed it in more formal process. Um, we do have, you know, things in our curriculum review cycle that have been put together, things to consider, things about bias, you know. So we do have things there, but we're like, how do we turn this into more street level data? That's what we're, what we're talking about more.
And I appreciate the um, little question because that's, as you can tell, that's where I'm headed to um, with regards to making sure we are really intentional. And in the current year's follow on, we have to make sure that we are really intentional about the things that we say we're doing, wanting to do. And that's something that as we develop our, I keep saying it's MTSS model, but the first part of MTSS is having a strong tier one, which is the core curriculum and, and core expectations and how we approach curriculum and, and how we are trying to make sure we are providing engaging, you know, learning experiences. And we're thinking about all of our kids when we are writing curriculum moving forward, using the standards. That's something that we're going to continue to be pushing as an expectation and it's going to take time. But I'm hoping you're hearing more and more in our conversations, we are really um, heart hat, starting these, the dialogue. We'll work with our leaders to develop their um, skills and to make sure that they are also thinking um, and leading with an equity mindset. And that that then permeates through the organization with our teachers and other staff as well. So um, we will become more intentional, you will hear more about how we're doing those kinds of things because it needs to happen. So great questions. You have a as well?
The one class in recent memory that we had come up, that I think originated to the point of your question, was the guitar class. Two years ago, two or three years ago, when, when it was identified by, by the dental music teacher that many of those students wanted to learn the guitar. And then, I don't know if they went to contact a specialist, but, you know, elevated that conversation and, and, you know, figured out it worked. And then, you know.
It's popular.
It's here and, and it's, it's very, it's very successful. And I, I, I don't know that every teacher understands how to make that process happen. Like, if, if there's a, if there's a teacher low called and she hears about, you know, there, you know, a bunch of her students wanting to learn Romeo and Juliet and, you know, to their hearts content or something like that. Is there something which is a Shakespeare, Shakespeare elective or something, yeah? Exactly, I think, I don't know that any average teacher would know how to, how to re elevate that conversation to make it, you know, progress. And, and that's, I think that's a process that needs to, to be developed in there.
So it is, it is part of our process. So again, we work with our content specialists, we have monthly meetings with our content specialists. Um, so they're teaching, like, we have a music one to help, you know, all the different areas. And one of the things that we start talking about in the spring is that they need to connect with the people that are in their departments and connect with those folks and see if there's any courses that, any needs of courses and stuff that need to be developed. Have those conversations when they're in com, in meetings with their departments. And so, I mean, we do start having that conversation. I think one of the things, and I may be going rogue here, my, my team might be getting a little upset with me right now if I.
Thank you Director Arlo, I really appreciate you presenting.
Not you guys, but I, I, we're the alignment team. Um, but we've been really talking about, like, right now we have content specialists, which is one person, like, just one person that's like in charge of music or one person, you know, social studies. And, and we really need to engage more and more of a committee structure. We, we have a person that's leading the committee, but then we have more of those voices at the table. So that when, when we're doing a ELA adoption, we've got more than just one ELA person that's, that's trying to figure out, you know, like what we, I mean, yes, we get a team together when we do all those things, but there should be a continual team where we're meeting regularly, even when we're not in adoption. Like, every year, like, what are the needs of ELA at the middle school? We could find out that, hey, the sixth grade team doesn't have any books right now, but we need to, you know, like, we need to work on. And so, I mean, we're trying to think about that. And that, that is something that we're having more and more conversations around is like, how can we structure it differently? Because we've lost, you know, over time with cuts in the past years. We used to have like us, full-time people, social studies, math, ELA, science, we don't have that anymore. We, we just don't have that, our structure has dwind, I don't want to say dwindled, that's probably not the right word, but we, we've made cuts. And so we don't, we, we just not, we just don't have the same number of people. And so I think we need to work more within the support of committee structures as much as possible.
I also believe that um.
More voices.
That the, the fact that um, we're focused on content areas, I think tends to lessen the voice of elementary teachers on the elementary level. Because when you think of content, you think of, of, you know, classes in middle school and high school and, you know, focused classes, focused time. And then like, you know, science looks really different in second grade than it does in a life science class. And the people that are, that are, our content specialists tend to be from those upper levels rather than the lower levels. And then it, it, there's a disconnect that happens. And, and it's, it's those teachers that feel disconnected that I'm worried about not being able to elevate their voices.
And we have already started because that is something that we identified early on, like, this is not working, it's not working perfectly for us, especially when we talk about like um, math and ELA, you know, like, it's, it's different. So we have actually added content specialists, we've been trialing it out a little bit, like, so we have an elementary math person now that's a content specialist. We have an elementary ELA person that's kind of leading our wonders team, as we've used to call them, but it's really our ELA team using our resource, you know, that we have. So we're, we're, we've been dabbling in this idea for a few years and we just started talking more like, how can we, how can we systematically branch this out? So that we're getting more voices to the table, we're getting more engagement of teachers in the development of our curriculum and, and making decisions around our resources that we have, so, yeah. We have to know what's on your radar.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And it's on my meeting agenda for tomorrow to talk more about that, so, with my curriculum team, so.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Happy New Year, happy twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Lots of work, thank you.
Nice to see you all.
Nice to see you too.
Nice to see you.
And next, uh, we have a, if you go to three Cs, group or community discussions.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Assistant Superintendent. I just asked to be put on this just quickly. Um, if we can spend a half hour or less on this, that would be great. I, I do know that we, you know, we at times really enjoy, you know, thinking about other options for committees. I remember being on a committee with Member Loffler Kemp and Member Oswald when I first got on the board and we looked at all kinds of different districts. But it's, I really just want to review the committees we currently have and just get a quick response from all of us about what, you know, we've all served on these or, you know, a number of you have served many times about meeting times, what is the role of the board on that committee? And just so next year, when there is committee assignments, I've already done committee assignments for this term, um, but we have a better understanding of the committees. And then in your red folder, I did ask, um, I just thought it was interesting. I did ask um, Executive Secretary to put in committee assignments from two thousand and five, committee assignments from twenty ten, twenty fifteen, and then twenty twenty. Just for you, you could take it home and look at it, see what we were doing back then. Um, if you want other years, you know, I certainly um, um, Secretary Paquette could, could research that as well. I actually had her pull for me just the, the seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen twos, so I know I have those if you're interested. But um, just kind of reviewing the different committees. We've got Parks and Rec, District Wellness, Public School Foundation. Um, we've got um, Education Equity, Federal Programs Advisory Committee, which I seem to have lost all sense of what that is or that I was on it or not supposed to be on it. Head Start Council, Intergovernmental Quality Steering Committee, Region Seven double A or on a lot of our committees, it's been called the Minnesota State High School League, Special Services Advisory Committee and Staff Development Advisory Committee, Transfer Appeal and Transportation Hazard Safety and Committee. So going back up to the top, Parks and Rec, that was Members Zdowski this past year. Can you just give us a, an update as to the, like, the dates, the times?
It is once a month and I was actually kind of looking up on the sheet. Uh, so I think it's the second Wednesday of the month, usually at five. I know last year it was um, on Zoom, but this year, um, all the meetings were in person. Um, there is the whole Parks and Rec kind of commission, um, staff from the Parks and Rec um, department that are at those meetings. There's a um, city counselor that's appointed um, as a liaison to that committee and then a county commissioner as well, as a school board member. Um, and so, I don't know, I think the meetings, you really get to, as a school board member, connect with other elected officials in the community at those meetings. You know, not all of them are super, super maybe directly connected to the work that we do, but I think that it is connected in, in some really important ways. Um, so the last year, they were looking at their strategic plan, for example. Um, and that kind of involves like where, where, are they going to be putting their funds for parks? And when you think about student enrollment, like, those kind of things are connected. Parents are going to want to move to communities that have good parks. Um, so there was a lot of really valuable kind of conversations and connections um, that I made there. I really enjoyed it, it's a really functional um, board, um, and they do a lot of really good work, so, that's what I would say about that one.
And so if it's in person, I, I, I was on it the year before and there was just one in person, yeah, it was Zoom with me as well. And, you know, it's, um, it's in the city chambers, right?
Yep.
In the actual where, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and how long do meetings usually last?
Um, the meetings last anywhere from an hour to two hours.
Any other, any other information? I know David has served on it, maybe Rosie?
When I was on it, I remember talking with Eric Torch, who was in the chair, he said.
Who?
Eric Torch, excuse me, Eric Torch, I don't know if he still is.
Oh?
No.
Anyway, his, I think Art Johnston was on there. But anyway, the comment was, you know, we'll let you know if there's something that involves you. But he said it really doesn't, at that time, it wasn't something that's going to involve the school district very much. You're welcome to come, buy a ticket, you know, you're not going to, so.
So Jessica.
But that was then.
Yeah, Jessica Peterson's on staff there and then I'm trying to think of the director's name, or do you remember? But um, she, she may reach out to the, Kelly, are you serving this year on the Parks and Rec, I think? Um, but she, she reached out to me and kind of onboarded me for about an hour and that was really helpful. Kind of set up a Zoom, so she might be doing that too as well. Uh, maybe I'll send her an email to kind of connect you guys.
My experience at work, David's, um, I served on it with Art also. And um, yeah, it, it was interesting to be at, um, listening to all of the park business and knowing what's going on. But it had nothing to do with the school, nothing. And I tried to connect it to the schools, I even tried, like, you know, they were talking about the traverse trail at the time and connecting it, you know, making it all, you know, citywide. And, and I'm like, you know, how can we allow, you know, make it accessible for kids to ride their bikes on the traverse trail to get to Lincoln Park, you know? Because at that time they were just connecting it to Lincoln Park and, and they, they were really interested in the fact that I said something. And they were like, you know, if you have an idea, let me know. And, and that was the only idea I ever had, because there was nothing even close to being relevant at that time. So I'm, I'm really thankful to hear that it, that, that you enjoyed your time, because it was really tedious.
I, I served on it one of my early years on the board and, and I, I really enjoyed it as well. And I always thought that the perspective I, I brought to the table was to try and think about ways to inform them on our school district, this part of whatever their discussion was, as well as um, kind of thinking through where there could be some potential partnerships. And, uh, and then also, um, you know, like, I think Amber, I thought really is a really good relationship building with um, this large body of people, because it's a large board, or it was at the time. Uh, and, and these are all people who are appointed to serve on, on that park board besides the elected ones. Uh, and so I, I always felt like it was, um, well, the meetings I thought were kind of long at times. Um, they, there was opportunities to, you know, uh, be an informant, if you will, to them as well as um, uh, make some connections and partnerships. And I, um, I, I, you know, I felt it was a, a good, useful, I was useful on their, their committee. And I, I learned a lot, just um, and was able to kind of share information on what they were doing with certain schools or certain people within the district that maybe could create some partnerships that, um, you know, so I thought it was good, yeah.
Thank you, so I hope you enjoy your time and thank you for reaching out to connect Kelly to Jessica. Or I could do that as well, that was one I didn't. I've, I've sent emails to quite a few of the different committees with the new names of those appointed and um, you should be getting those connections as well, but I, I did not really do this with Jessica, but.
I'm doing.
Yeah, thank you. Um, next on my list is District Wellness. And that one, I, I did reach out to um, Jake Laurent and Callie Dever?
Dever.
But they actually referred me back to you, you know, because they, they, you know, so I'll let David talk a little bit because he's been on it for, I bet. My whole, I've been on this, on the school board now four years and I think you've always been our District Wellness Committee member.
Really hasn't met since Jeff Gordon was here, I remember that. One meeting was well attended, we discussed the reintroduction of vending machines in the schools.
Yeah, okay.
And the principals were there and the food service advisor and Renee Williamson was there. They were very good people.
They were very good people. And there may have been one, maybe, maybe two meetings about that. The next meeting, Jeff and I were the only ones there, the only ones that showed up. And I don't think it's been, it's met since then. And my impression was that it was, well, Jeff or the Assistant Superintendent who called the meetings at that time.
That's correct.
And COVID, of course, went through a lot of things. So that was what it is. It has a lot of potential for issues, I think, but.
If I could jump into some.
Yeah, please do.
I believe, they just meant our call, it was during COVID, we met a couple times during COVID.
Oh, yeah.
To review, we had, there's still, and still I'll state, I'm always honest, we, there's an annual, or a three-year annual wellness policy that we have to update. And we were given some grace to, you know, to not implement some things, because it was during COVID. So that is still one of the things that we have to sort of back off. So we did meet twice, because we were about to have discussions around vending machines and things of nature. But we went, all the students were at home, we're home. And so it was like, okay, well, we will come back to that, but we just have not sort of backed around the wellness. But that is something that we have to fulfill, and.
So what do you see, what do you see the role of a board member? And then is this a committee that only meets when necessary? So you can't really say it meets once every other month, or?
I think every year, we have to determine what things we have on our plates with regards to things we need to accomplish. But because again, there's a three-year policy that has to be updated. So there is work, and we just have to decide as a team, as a committee, how often do we need to meet in order to fit our obligations? So annually, we just have to.
And who else is on, who else, who do you have on that besides?
Teachers, principals, community members, we have a variety of community members on there as well. And we just have, we have Sheila, Sheila.
Is it Sheila?
It is Sheila. Who was the other person before that? Pam, my mind is the name. Pam, and now Sheila, oh, whoops, I called it. So our nutrition coordinator serves on it as well. So we have a variety of people, and we just have to reboot it.
I was just getting, oh, go ahead.
I said, I think it has a lot of potential, so it was good, so we just pulled it through a lot.
Thank you. I think it does too. And I actually was on it before I was a board member representing the PTA, because the PTA at the state national level has done a lot of advocacy around that wellness policy. And so I know, you know, that's a group of people to connect to, be involved with it. The PTA, just a little history, was the organization that lobbied to get hot lunch programs in our schools years and years ago. But, yeah, so I, I, I've always thought that committee has lots of potential besides tied to that three-year, every three-year wellness policy, but, yeah. Okay, our next committee is the Duluth Public Schools Foundation, and then after that is Education Equity, or EAC. So I'll turn it over to Member Lachlan Kemp, who seems to, from looking at all of the past committees, has really spent a lot of her time and has a passion for.
Yeah, I really enjoy this, and I'll just keep it short, because I have given some updates at some of our board meetings. But the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund was started in 1984, so that's how long it's been going on. And it's, you meet through the Duluth Superior Community Foundation. It's one of their programs within, and they staff it. But the board is made up of eight to 10, mainly retired teachers, some community members, and some current teachers. And part of their board, or their bylaws includes a school board liaison. And I think the superintendent is also connected on there through their policy as well. And really, as we meet six to eight times a year, and we kind of have a, and it's an hour meeting. It's, we're changing our meeting date this year, that's why I'm a little, it is three Mondays at 4:00. And you really, we have kind of a timeline that we follow each year of getting money for the fund, and then also distributing the grants to the teachers. And so there's kind of a set calendar of activities, which is, it makes it an easy board to be on in some ways, or committee to be on. But we also very much a working committee. So one of the things that we do as board members is we go out to all of the schools to promote, to staff meetings, to promote staff to apply for the grants. And March 1st is when the grant is a deadline, and then we go through and distribute the grants in April and May, and that gets approved by the board in April or May. And so you've heard about this through that approval that we do as a board as well. So it's, I really enjoyed being on it, but you work, you do outside work, and you need to be kind of committed to that. And it is part of their bylaws to have a school board liaison on it. But I'm, you know, considered a board trustee, just the way their bylaws are written up.
So my comment, and this is actually for all of these committees in a way. I know that when I've talked with Member Lachlan Kemp about this particular committee, because it'd be one to, I would be, that would be interesting for me with my background of teaching. But is that it does seem to have a kind of a schedule. Like, Member Lachlan Kemp would like to complete this cycle. She's been working on the foundation and all of the process. And if March 1st is kind of where they're awarding them, and then April is when, you know, they're left, no, then there's a, there's a cycle to that. And that's true of some of these committees, that there is a cycle that doesn't fit nicely with our January to December. And so that would be a future conversation to have about what we're willing to do and what the committees are willing to do. Like, would the foundation, the Duluth Public Schools Foundation be willing to say, okay, in May, there's going to be a new board member joining, so that they're on board when you start in August, and they will cycle through a year? So that we're not chopping that up? And I don't know if anybody else has any other ideas about other committees you've served on, about just a natural break where it would be better for us to have some of these committees that aren't a January to December assignment?
I think it would be really useful for some of them to follow the fiscal year rather than the calendar year, you know, from July 1 to June 3.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think.
That'd be very interesting.
I think the Education Equity Committee is one of them, because they break in July and kind of reset for the new school year. And so the new person going on would be part of the conversation from the first get-go. Whereas if somebody who's starting this month.
Yeah.
You know, we've already had four months of prepping and, you know, winding up to do whatever action is. And, you know, there's MLK Day, you know, happening right away, and those sorts of things that, you know, you're jumping right into.
Yeah, and then that, you know, again, I've been blessed and I'm humbled and honored to be a board chair for now the fourth year, which then I have had really a lot of insight into these committees. And that's not always, that doesn't always happen when we have a new board chair every, every term. Now I'm starting to see that, yeah, when I get this worksheet to help us put these together, I don't want to break up continuity. So you are often put on the same committee that you were just on. But yet then that doesn't allow all of us to kind of cycle through, because I think we all learn something by being on as many of the committees as we have. But I feel like I don't want to pull you out at a time when I think you're building on some things. Some of these are easier than others to not have to cycle, or to finish, to start now and go through. So just an opportunity again to revisit this conversation. But I know I just was interested in a lot of this different things. So thank you, though, for Duluth Public Schools Foundation. That's a really opportunity. And so next is EAC, or Education Equity.
They kind of switched their, they used to meet around 5:00, and now it's been more 4:30 to 7:00. That just happened within the last couple of months. It's a nice change, because it allows for a little social hour, half hour, kind of some more informal kind of connecting and community building. And then they usually do a dinner. And then Nate Smith is just doing an amazing job there. They've kind of implemented kind of a committee structure, or, you know, for people that are engaged in EAC and maybe interested in kind of pursuing a certain topic, whatever that may be. They can kind of break into smaller groups and work on those things and come back. So it's been good. And another cool thing about the EAC is they're switching their location, which is nice.
Every month.
Every month.
Yeah.
And it's not a big deal. They just send an email out, and it's kind of through the equity lens of being able to get to the meeting, and that's been good. I don't know if you have anything to add?
And again, yeah, the next one is January 12th. And so you said they tend to be the second Thursday?
Usually the third.
Thursday, maybe.
But it varies according to time of year and when they can get them to the place usually they want to go in.
Yeah, but they give a lot of notice about when and where their meetings are. I think they do a good job, so obviously.
And I have noticed that they start with this 4:30 dinner. I'm sure that's not something a board member would have to get to if you're working till 5:00, as far as your schedule, but.
They have a pretty laid-back kind of atmosphere that kind of works with people from all sorts of schedules. I think it is valuable to make it to the dinner, though. It's really good for, you know.
Obviously, this Thursday, I won't be able to go, because we'll be at the MSDA conference. Are you able, you can see, please?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I was going to say this, but it's, we love that you're going to be able to have a presence at EAC.
Don't worry, I'll hold them for you.
Me and David.
Sounds good.
The other thing about EAC that's kind of changed, and it happened last year, but it kind of happened in process, and that is that we went from having one board member and one alternate to actually Nate Smith saying he would embrace two board members. So now, now we've started where we're just appointing two board members. And Nate Smith, according to Amber and Alana, but also just from talking with him, he would be open to any of us stopping in to, you know, to view and be a part of. He's really wanting more engagement. We have to be careful, because it can't be more than three of us.
Well, it actually can, because it's posted, it's posted on our schedule.
Okay.
So, you know, four or more people is okay. We're not doing board business.
Right.
And it's a, it's a social thing.
Any other comments? That's a, you know, and there are some of our committees that all of us are really interested in. Again, that's why, you know, looking at our cycles and how we rotate in and out, you know, we can have conversation on too. But, but good to know that we can go to EAC and be a part of it, or at least be there to show our support of our staff that are there and other community members that are there, probably. And again, I think this has been said before, and we've had conversations. I've had, you know, our committees are an opportunity for us. I don't care what we, you know, just an opportunity for us to be visible and supportive, and a team player, I think of the Parks and Rec especially, yep. I know there's not much, and I don't want to add a whole, you know, they have a meeting just like we do, and they probably want, you know, they want to leave early too. So I don't want to really be, but I just, I think when they see us there, they know that we appoint, they just like our connection. You know, we want to work with the City of Duluth. We have lots of things going on with them. Doesn't necessarily have to do with Parks and Rec, but we're there as just somebody to do. I had it easy. We were on Zoom. Do you think they would let you go on Zoom, even when they're in-person, or not?
They haven't been giving that.
Option, okay.
Just kind of a thought on what you're saying is that I think, you know, I mean, I knew there were all these committees when I became a board member, and that was one of the things that motivated and excited me about being a school board member was the opportunity to get to know the community in different ways and to be, make that connection with the community, with our schools as well. And so I think, you know, it is something to be thinking about as we talk to people about what it means to be a board member is our, it is meetings, and it's governance, and it's all the things we do at this table. But it's also all these things we do out in the community. And we recognize that different board members have different amounts of time and energy to put it in, and we need to respect that, you know, that's okay. And so that's why, you know, I kind of feel like, you know, some people might want to be on four committees, some people two, and they're going to do it really well, and that's okay. You know, we all, but we all need to do our part to kind of do the work of the board, and these are the work of the board. And so I kind of, I think it's important that people are just passionate about whatever they sign up to do and then do it well. It doesn't matter how many committees they serve on. So I just, I think, as we talk about, you know, talk to people about maybe future board members, we make sure they know that this is some of the work. Because I know, you know, from over the years, people don't always realize this is part of the work of the board, is to be doing these community things as well, besides coming to.
But I do appreciate, and I've wanted to say it openly to you all too, is some of us have more time.
Yeah.
Some of us are raising kids, some of us have extra jobs that, you know, we have different shifts. Some of us would have more time during the day. And if there's a meeting that happens more at 8:30 to 9:00, that would be something that you could take on. That would be more me right now. And then some of you would have to be after 5:30, because you pick up kids and you have dinners, and you have, you know, different events your kids are involved in. So we have to be aware of that, and now that we maybe have a more specific, as much as we can, you know, you have to be really clear when you sign up that says, I'm not just putting three or four, because just want to, you know, not, it's because you have obligations and, you know, a life. And so that's important. So thank you. On to Head Start? Nope, Federal Programs Advisory Committee. How could I forget that? That meets on Fridays. It's a Google Meet from 9:00 to 9:45, once a month. It's usually the first Friday of the month. Darren Sheldon runs that from his, that's his role, and he's come before us a number of different times and talked to us about federal programs. I really don't know how I got on the, I've been on it, Alana's been on it. It really is just one person, one board member is supposed to be assigned. I don't know where, why I joined in. Because I think I just joined in September and did like September, October, November, December. Well, we've only had two or three, but I don't know. But, Member Oswald is on there, and, but I did learn a lot. So, I don't know. You know, but Darren told me this morning in our email, or yesterday, he doesn't need two of us, just needs one. He probably liked, he was appreciative that I was there. But I did learn a lot about where Title, Title IV. I did learn a lot about Title IV dollars and where Title I dollars go. I actually, I mean, I think we all should, well, he has presented to us all of this information, so. Anything you want to add? I've kind of taken part in your time.
I, no, I just think that with my extensive history, Title I, that he enjoys that he doesn't have to explain it so much. But yet, he can, he can tailor it, the conversation to people that don't know, also, much easier. And that would be a board conversation that we can have. I think it's extremely valuable to understand the amount of title funds we do get, and how they are allocated, and how they are spent. And because it's changed over the years, I mean, you know, I worked in Title I with Marianne Repandy from 2003 to 2005, and she had, you know, an iron fist on those funds. And, you know, now they're not so iron-fisted, they're just given out and, you know, divvied up is Darren's main job, and the principals allocate, and Darren kind of makes sure that it's being spent wisely and appropriately and according to federal law. But, and there's some really different ways to do it too. So I think, you know, there's advantages to looking at if we need something, to fund something specific, like interventions and things like that, that title dollars can be used in more creative ways. I think there's opportunity there. But yet, when you take, create opportunity for some, it has to take away from others, because the money is finite. So that's my lecture for today. Thank you for coming to my Ted Talk.
And it is interesting to see the monies that are allocated for the needs of Duluth students and how Darren is so well-versed and open to using money to help our students. And as board members, that's. And, and, and as board members, then we see, he'll explain what, what we have purchased or what, what we are funding for our students. And just that, that's insight when, when, when community members think that, you know, we're not making progress on achievement gap or we're, we're not adequately supporting students that need extra support. You actually do hear that we, we are, we are. Doesn't always result in a test score necessarily, but it's there and the kids feel it. So thank you.
And title is more than, more than just, you know, allocating for achievement. I mean, title covers, you know, the M- can Vendo Act, you know, we're helping homeless kids and, and kids just get to and from school and, and, you know, housing issues and, and different things like that. So it's, it's all focused on achievement in the end, but it's not necessarily about a test score all the time.
Including like parent engagement as well. Absolutely.
I, I just, I got a question. I, I, I think it would be interesting to, we, we talk about the federal programs and funding when we're doing the budget process. But I think it would be interesting and informative to us to have Darren come in and just, you know, kind of recap the different federal programs and, you know, not, just give us some more background. I think that would be really interesting as a, maybe of the whole meeting.
Okay. Make that happen. That's great.
There's Kayla typing that in.
Someone else was scheduled.
So our next one is Head Start Policy Council. I, I actually asked, or didn't ask, I put, I put myself on that committee. But then I found out when talking to Sheri a little bit, she didn't get back to me until yesterday or today actually about, that's not the best timeline for me. And so remember, Lachlan Kemp has been on it before and she's willing to step in and do that. And I would be maybe the alternate if she couldn't go there. So you, you've been on it before. Kelly's been on it before. It's a mandated assignment. We have to be on it. They meet the, usually the third Thursday. No, they usually meet, normally they meet the second Thursday, but Sheri Williams has told me that that's conflicting with IAC often. So, and that's a committee she likes her parents or her parents are involved in. So she doesn't want to have a conflict. So she's moved January, February and March meetings to the third Thursday. And, and then, you know, Sheri says this meeting does have a little bit of flexibility, not much, but, you know, she wants it on the schedule. She wants it from 5:30 to 7:30 and they usually meet at Lowell. And so just an opportunity too for others of you that that fits your timeline. Just doesn't fit my timeline right now with the coaching and stuff that I do at Denton.
I would just say two things that I totally loved that committee and I, that was one when I first got on the board, I really wanted to be on. I, because I was familiar with Head Start. But what I loved about it as a board member was just getting to know parents who come from many different backgrounds across the city. And this is a governing board where they're learning how to be leaders. And that was really cool to see that process of empowering them. But it also was a, a good way for them to see that the work that they're doing as they're at this governing board is important. And for me as a board member to kind of reaffirm them often as well as kind of connect them to, to questions. Because many of them are, are parents of, of kids under the age of five, even though some of them now have school-aged kids. And, and, and to really encourage them on their involvement at that level as a governing board to continue to be active in their kids' school. So I really got a lot out of that, those meetings and really enjoyed it. And I, I was on it for a few years because nobody else signed up. And I, I finally said, you know, I will stay on it because I really love going and holding babies and getting invited to playgrounds with parents and, and that. But I really would like other people to have this really great experience. And, and I, you know, I am friends with people who now have kids in fifth grade or sixth grade that we just really kind of connected. And I babysat for them, you know, I mean, it's just, you know, really neat. But as a board member, I felt like I could really, you know, empower parents to keep being involved as well. So, yeah.
And, you know, just to clarify, I don't, I don't know, on, on the boards we've covered so far, are, is our purpose more to be there as a listener and a, just a connector? Or, I mean, are there, like, are you actively involved in like the agenda topics? Like you, like whatever's on the agenda, you, they're looking for your support? Like will they come, will they say, well, we need a school board approval of this? Or we'll need the school board to, you know, what?
I, I think, you know, with that one, no, I was there to really listen and observe. But I think it really varies with each of these. With, for me, like with the Duluth Public Schools Foundation, you know, it's a working committee. You're there to make some things happen.
Read grants and everything.
Yeah, we read grants and we promote it and that, you know, but, you know, so each, each of these, as we go through them, we probably play a different role, you know, than, so I don't think we can blanket saying what kind of role we play. But, but I, yeah, I mean, I'm not a voting member on, on the governing board when they're making decisions, but.
Okay. Anything else? So Intergovernmental. And at this year, we've got David Kirby, who's returning, Amber Zdowski and Kelly Dura-Eater. And this one is one too that I, I'd be, you know, it'd be nice, I'm sure you go back. Intergovernmental in, you know, 2005 was Mike Akervik, Tim Grover, Tom Husted, you know, Tim Grover, Art Johnston, Judy Silivo-Kanko. I mean, we've always had it, but don't always know if, you know, what we really were doing in those, those years. I don't, you know, we could. I mean, when, when, when David, so David, when my, my first year as a chair, it was you and me, but I, and Sally. And I, I felt that that was, at least in my brief, brief time here, that it had, you, you had a, you met with Frank Jewell and you and Sally and Renee Van Nette and maybe a, you know, somebody else.
Mostly organized by Frank Jewell.
Right.
And they were Zoom and they met once a month. Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, 9:00 to 10:00 and they were an hour. That was it.
That was it. Yep.
Sally was not that involved. Rosie was there at times and.
That was his past.
Past year. Yep. And Renee was there and Tominek.
Tominek, yeah, Teresa.
Teresa, Tominek. And there were, and sometimes there was a second county commissioner.
Patrick Boyle.
Yeah. Patrick Boyle was there sometimes. The role I thought we played was giving them information about the school district. They don't have a clue about what we do, what our budget is, how we work, that we're governing. They really don't. And so that was useful. It was also useful seeing if there were things that we could do together, especially during COVID when there was all this extra money. Now, I'm not sure what will happen. We'll see. So Frank's gone, so I see that Ashley Grimm is on it. So we can reach out to her and see.
And I, I reached out to Patrick Boyle today. I don't think I CC'd Ashley Grimm, although I, I had a suspicion she was going to be the county, another county commissioner. And I reached out to Teresa Tominek, who doesn't think she'll be the city rep there. I don't know.
Frank always thought that two from each were plenty. If you get more people, there's just too many people at a meeting and you don't get anything done. So he wanted two people from each, from each county or city.
And I think David's right. The, the role really right now as it's functioning and when I was on it years ago, when I first got on the board, it was kind of different, but really it's us being kind of informants and inviting them to participate in our survey. When we were doing the community surveys with our strategic plan and making sure they knew about that and events. You know, promoting them to get out and tell people about the conversations you're having, what's it called again, in the evenings.
Education after hours.
Yeah, yeah, education after hours. When I first said it, they thought you were having happy hour. I said, no, 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 it's Coco in the park. Anyways. But I think, you know, it's, 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 it's great. And, and I, I just said, I, I want other people again to have that experience because it's just, again, really good relationship building with city, county and, yeah.
So I, I agree. And it is one too that, you know, a lot of you are interested in that. So my question would be, is that David is right, there, we assigned three. So, you know, when I've been on it, I've just, I've just not been a part of the, the meeting with Frank Jewell and crew. And I've thought that there were other things I could do. I don't know what that was. I once went with the mayor and, you know, once, you know, kind of Ashley Grimm has been in my district and so, but I'm just going to let Amber, Kelly, I know, we're already past a half hour. We're going to let Amber, Kelly and David decide which two of you are meeting with the, with the, the third.
We're gonna scum wrestle.
Third Wednesday. And maybe the three of you show up for the first couple, couple of times and kind of get reunited and then see where you go from there. But it is, it is the third Wednesday. It is by WebEx Zoom. It is from 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock and it's really good. Okay. Quality Steering Committee. This past year, it's been Kelly and Rosie. Do you want to chat about how often you meet and where you go from there?
Sure. And then Kelly, I would love if you just want to kind of give your perspective on what it is because you had this, this experience this year. But, and, and Alana, I know you've served on this in the past, just like David. Just like David, but it's, there's three, there's, there's in-person meetings now and then virtual meetings. So it's a big time commitment. It is. And, but our role there with the administration is there. Anthony does a great job co-chairing it with Jim, who's one of the DFTs. And really there, we, I feel our role is to just listen and provide insight if we, if it's appropriate. But, and it's by their bylaws that we are serving on it. Yeah.
And that has recently gone from one to now two. So this is only about our third year of having two on this quality steering. Otherwise it was just one of us.
So it started out the year where it was not just the QSC, but then there was all these other. And then the district and the DFT did a lot of work together to figure out, you know, how to rebuild the structure and really feed things in. And they just did a ton of work this year. And so the QSC really, I think, is, is turning, is being molded into exactly what, you know, we really need it to be. And it's just a really interesting committee to sit on. But it's a lot of stuff that kind of pulls us out of the governance piece and more in the management piece. So Rosie and I have been really intentional about keeping that governance focus when we're sitting at QSC. And I think that's been really helpful. It's, it's just been a good committee to sit on, but it is a time commitment. Yeah, it's a, it's a time commitment.
We're appreciative of the, the time spent. And I would also say that the, because of the dedication of the DFT administration working together on that process, I feel like we're in a much, much better and different place than we were a year ago. And I would also say that also, you know, we, we maybe talk about pandemic issues once a meeting for a moment as opposed to everything being in such a frenzy of, of development and concern and fear. And so I, I think that the past nine, six, six months of meetings have been really, really a totally different atmosphere and very, they've always been solution oriented, but I think they've, they've been much, much more productive. And we all walk away from it feeling like it was time well spent.
Really to the credit because, you know, the first couple of meetings I went to, I was like, I just wasn't sure. Like I can't do anything about the computers at all. Like I just didn't know. And, and I think as the meeting agenda like has gotten set better and it's just a better understanding and a collective goal. And I can't say how much better the last meeting I went to was than the first meeting. And I think the DFT would, would say the same thing, that it's just more productive.
And we just had that meeting today, right?
Yes.
So thank you. And I, I do appreciate as a, as a board member who's not going to those, that we have Adele, our communication specialist, taking notes. And then that is, that is uploaded in the staff newsletter because all, that's more, more important for staff. I like it as a board member as well, but it's really for our staff to know what, that their concerns and that their leadership and union is being, you know, done. So I, I appreciate that.
Can I just add one other thing? I, I think, and I, I've served on it in the past, but I always also thought in terms of a board member being there, all of the information that's discussed gets to all board members. There's nothing that I know that you don't know and, and, or whoever is serving on it that you don't know. And it usually is stuff that was, is going to be discussed at our next meeting or has been discussed. So, you know, there's not anything there that all board members aren't privy to discussion of. You know, today, the calendar committee came up, for example, you know, and we're, we all will be voting on that calendar. And so I think that's just kind of also important, but I really appreciate Adele's minutes. That's really helpful.
I would also give credit, sorry, to Jim Jubenville, working with Ethan. Ethan is a very positive leader. And Jim has really been, he's, he just has a really nice nature and way of facilitating and also the way that we work together. And agenda construction has just been very, very solution oriented.
When I've, when I've listened to other school board members on the MSBA conversations, I've often asked about their quality, about their, about what does their school board do to engage with our teachers, our teacher union? And they, most of them do meet and confer four times a year. And just to clarify, isn't this a little bit like a meet and confer or is it not? You know, meet and confer that other school boards are doing across the state are three board members sitting down with, you know, union leadership to have regular updates and concerns, you know, shared and, and understood and listened to. And I just always thought that our Quality Steering Committee looks to me like a meet and confer opportunity.
Really more of the quality cycle and quality circle process of elevating the ideas of. And you can look at it that way, but I think again, it's really title of it's what quality is.
I would think maybe ours is a better model, you know, than just these four times a year, the school board sits with union leaders and they, they have a meet and confer.
The, the only time I've really heard meet and confer used is when we're talking contracts.
Yeah, yeah. So you want to be careful about using it. Yeah.
Yeah, but other school boards call that meet and confer. That's, that's what they say.
What they're using. They may, they may be meeting to, to check in on the contract and evolve it. You don't know when they're extra discussing.
And it's generally kind of seen as a labor management committee, which is more kind of a language that separates it from a negotiating committee.
Just, just wondered because nobody seems to have that kind of a committee when I look at, when I talk with other school boards, but.
Well, the labor management process is unique. Yeah.
Okay.
Not many use it as far as I am. Yeah.
I would like to be on that committee before I move my term. But, but again, you know, you guys are all great about putting down what, what you can manage and what, what works in your schedules. Next is Region 7AA or also Minnesota State High School League. So Paul, you are my.
I'll do the best I can with this here and throw it in the call box.
But thanks for your work. That's a.
Well, it's, if you look at the list of past community assignments, it's always been listed as 7, 7AA. You ever wonder why you don't get an invitation to a meeting? You ever wonder why you don't get an invitation to a meeting or a committee meeting?
Cause I was on it for the first two years.
Cause you're not on that committee. So in my quarterly visit with one of our athletic directors, Tom Pearson, we sat down to try to learn some things and figure things, a few things out, and we do not have school board representation on the 7AA committee, and so that's one reason I haven't been getting invitations to the committee meeting. The committee meets quarterly, usually a week after the, the 7AA athletic directors or activities directors meet, and I think they are meeting later this month. ISD 709 does have a representative on that committee, the 7AA committee, and the principal rep is Tom Tuscan from Denton. So that's a good thing. The two current school board reps are from Subregion 1 and Subregion 2, and I believe that's Rogers and Cambridge. And just for future reference, maybe that's the most important thing here, is, is this, we're Subregion 3 and we will not have even, doesn't actually have to come from ISD 709, it could even come from other towns or other schools that are part of Subregion 3. So we won't have a board, the opportunity for a board representation on the 7AA committee until 2030.
Twenty thirty?
So it goes from Subregion 2 to Subregion 1, and then the next two are Subregion 4 and then Subregion 1 again. So I'll make sure to get a copy of this, so that's, that's probably something important to have in this record. So anyway. So moving on, and.
No, I have life goals.
So after my conversation with Cheryl LeFol, the other, I, we kind of decided that, you know, oh, maybe we'll just kind of make this a Minnesota State High School Week liaison position, you know, where I, I do have quarterly conversations with our activities directors. They, they don't go running the other way when they see me coming, so I appreciate that. And, and they're, they're very open to, you know, sharing things with me if I have questions or if there's something that I need to know. And, and now I guess I should include Tom Tuscan as maybe someone to touch base with too, since he is sort of in the committee. I do have minutes from their last meeting in September, but I'm not gonna go over that. So, so that's kind of how this will operate going forward with, you know, trying to keep the board informed of things like boys' father votes coming down, so that'll probably be a, a board decision, you know, how we're gonna handle that within, within ISD 709, you know, if it's gonna be a cooperative team or if we can try to have two high school teams, or we can choose to not participate until we can build a team.
Thanks for working that in here.
Any other questions on 7AA or?
I, I just appreciate you keeping us informed, because they're actually, over the years, both when I've been on the board and before, when I was with the PTA, was some really issues around gender and around gay athletes and, and things like that, 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 the, yeah, the leak came out and it was very controversial and, and stuff, and so there, there may be some issues that it's important we know, because of policies that are important to us as a district as well, so.
Well, just for your background too, there is two school board reps on the statewide Minnesota State High School League. So I served on the Minnesota State High School League as a Board of Director, kind of prestigious four-year, you're voted in, but I was a speech theater debate rep. That was how I got on that board. But I served that with two other school board. And as I got, as I got on this, as I got elected to the school board, I thought, oh, I might be able to get on the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors again, cause that's kind of a, a cool deal, you get to hang, hand out trophies at state meets and, you know, it's just a really great opportunity. And I would pursue that, you know, I would say that we should be thinking about, and I, I would imagine it comes through the region committee that Paul referenced, that the region committee, if, if, and I think his name is Tom Las, what's, it used to be Doug McIver, now who took Doug McIver's place as the secretary?
I don't know.
His name is Tom Leonards from Cloquet. If Tom Leonards knew that any one of us was interested in maybe pursuing being on the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors as the school board rep, you could certainly put your name in. And it's, it's, it's a really great opportunity to, to do that. They meet once a month. The other thing that Paul and I talked about last, a couple of days ago, is that you, you can visit the Minnesota State High School League website and read their minutes and find out about inclusion policies, about gender equity concerns, about the whole, the whole blow up has been with the fan and the sometimes player disrespect and harassment and inappropriate language and name-calling and behavior. And you saw that too, even, even with some coaches around the state that have been, you know, kind of suspended for a bit because of some inclusion or some inappropriate language, sometimes not by their, you know, not intentional, just maybe in the heat of an observation, but, so I just think that if Paul is willing to, not every month, but when there's concerns that he hears through either the A.D.s or through looking at the Minnesota State High School League's website, cause they, and any of us can do that as well, I think it's really important for our, our role. And the other thing is the, the Minnesota State High School League, the Minnesota School Board Association, the AMSD, they've all come together for this statewide student-led group. And can you give us some information on that, Paul? Yep, okay, or John? I know, they had a conference December 5th.
I can't, just wondering time-wise.
I know, okay.
I've, I've been, I've got up at 3:30 to drive the streets and still driving to St. Paul with Chair LeFol, but I, I could give us an update.
No, we won't. Just, but those are things that we should hear about, you know, and so you can do that in your superintendent's report on this one.
Yes, I apologize, and I mean it.
Now, that's true, okay.
The Subregion 3, this would be include you, the representation currently, I think, is the Hurton Athletic Superintendent, Wayne.
Right, I've, I've never been.
And, and his term expires at the end of this year.
Okay, so I could.
So then it goes to Subregion 2, Subregion 1, Subregion 2.
No, you've got to wait.
And so we don't have to worry about it, John.
Yeah.
And I, I do think it would be, well, there's gonna be a gap where ISD 709, unless we can get coaches on there, wouldn't have representation other than our A.D.s, but, you know, there's coaches in fine arts, as we talked. But Tom's term expires in 2025, and then there's another subregion, well, I guess actually we could, or another principal within the district, we could pursue that position to represent 2025 to 2029, representing Subregion 3.
We have participated in that student group, and I was just joking a little bit, but we, I think it's really important, they've focused on, on anti-racism by players, they focused on gender inclusion. I also met with a community organization recently, and they, they talked about how, even if we have a policy like our gender inclusion policy that's very thoughtful, that it doesn't necessarily mean that the environment is there once it's implemented. So I'm thinking out, we might say we, you know, trans students can join the sport for which they identify, but if the environment doesn't feel safe, and if we haven't done the right cultivation of the climate, we're gonna end up with a problem. So I think it's, it's, it's a very important topic, and I, I think it is important for us to continue to focus on it. And it'll be, I've actually reached out to Trans Northland during one of our meetings, and they're, they're willing to work with us too, thinking from parent perspective or family member perspective, and from a binary trans perspective, how can we, how can we implement these policies and changes in a way that's thoughtful?
I also brought up the conference schedule for next week, and there is a workshop by the State High School League.
Yeah, I've gone to that.
Yeah, yeah, for people who might want to learn more.
Next, we have Special Services Advisory Committee, member Oswald.
They meet every other month by Zoom from 4:15 to 5:30, usually on a Thursday. I think it's the second Thursday of the month, but I'm not exactly positive. And any special ed parent or anyone's welcome to come, and they don't have enough people coming, and I mean, they, anybody can come, and they kind of just go over what is the hot button issue within the bed, or a parent has a specific concern, it's talked through and, and made sure that, you know, procedures are being followed and follow-ups are gonna be made and, and that sort of thing. It's, it's very solution oriented, the role of the school board member pretty much is, is to make sure that the parents are heard and that we know that, that there's issues and we acknowledge them and, and affirm them and, and, you know, kind of reassure them that, you know, we'll make sure that it's, it's going to be followed through, and it's been nothing but a positive experience, and the parents are really glad to have the connection with the school board members there in, in no real official capacity other than just being supportive.
And is that, is that, is that gatherer of the committee Jason Crane? Is that who that is? Okay, okay, just good to know who's.
And if he's not there, then it was Jackie Ward.
And now our associate is.
Laura Thurston.
Yeah, Laura, okay, awesome. So next is Staff Development Advisory Committee. This is actually a new committee, and I don't even think it was on, oh, I guess it looks like it was on 2022. That's Heather Hartley. Alana's on that this coming year. They gather four times a year, and it, you're there as a listener, and it is where she has a committee of between 12 and 17 elementary, middle school, high school, special education teachers, early childhood teachers, and they are the ones that are giving her feedback on professional development, ideas, topics. It's her advisory. She's got other committees that also feed in within the district services building, but this is an advisory. The, the, the committee is not asked to do the work, it's not like they are there planning it all and doing the, all of the different elements of, of that day, but they're her advisory committee, and she really is supportive. What I liked about Heather is she, she actually does believe, almost like a Nate Smith, that engagement, so having an opportunity to have pizza before the meeting or on another night, she, I think she has one coming up, some kind of an, an evening without, you know, any meetings where, where you're gonna have dinner or something, so.
Happy hour.
Yeah, and so, again, fairly new, this would be the second year. As a school board member, we're just there to listen, but it's, it's a very good opportunity. Transfer Appeal.
Okay. This is, this is one where the board member is playing an active role, and we, we do have a policy on transfer appeal, it's in the student handbook, you should be well aware of that. We meet, I would guess, two to three times in the spring, maybe, it's kind of as needed, it's, it's always as needed or when these issues come up, and maybe two or three times in the summer. I, I do wanna thank Kayla and Assistant Superintendent Bonds for helping organize these Zoom meetings with usually parents and students, parents but sometimes students, so they can, they don't have to get anywhere to participate in their, their, these meetings. We do it remotely. And, and I also wanna thank, you know, the other members over the.
That's what I was.
Best couple of years that have helped serve on this committee too, because there's a school board rep, we have someone else from within the administration, Nate Smith, yes, and then the third person is kind of rotated around, and I didn't, I wasn't gonna mention all the names, cause it seems to change annually.
So is a committee member.
Becky?
Is that a community member?
Sometimes we have somebody else, yeah, usually there's a community member, but somebody else in the office down there served and helped out too.
And that's shit, that's shit I'm used to being, but it just depends.
But.
We rotate it every year.
You know, these are often difficult decisions, I mean, yes, many of these are students or families that wanna move their student from west to east, but it's, it's not always that, it could just be from an elementary to another elementary, and that school may be crowded, or there may be other, other underlying issues. And, and what makes it difficult is, there's always a story, you know, there's always the family, the situation, there's always a story there, and we have to kind of follow our policy and then weigh out the, the issue at hand with each individual case, so. You know, I, I guess I could say, and remember Oswald has served on the committee in the mass too, you know, you know, oftentimes they're approved, but then recently we've, we haven't approved every request that's come our way. And, and, and it's hard to say no, but, you know, we've got it. That's why it's a committee of diverse people with diverse backgrounds, and so.
Are these almost always by Zoom, especially lately, or?
It happens for the last three years, they've been by Zoom.
And are they usually during the day?
You did them all in person.
All in person, all during the day, yeah.
Okay.
I, I do think, I would, I mean, unless you had a family that asked to do it in person, I, I just think it's more easy, or it's easier for those families to then be there and participate, you know, they don't have to drive to get somewhere, they, they can fit it within their, their schedule. And, and I think Kayla, Assistant Superintendent Bonds have done a great job organizing.
I do think it's, it's harder when they are in person, because.
It's harder to say no, yeah.
You know, the tears flow there, you, you always have had the box of Kleenex on, on the table, and, and you were the, you know, everybody would grab for it and hand it over at the same time, because, you know, the emotion is, is much more powerful when, when you're in person. But when I was on it, I know that when I would take care to, to try to listen for reasons that fit other policies that would support or, or deny whatever their request was, rather than making it about, you know, yes or no, you know, my personal opinion, but, you know, a lot of times there would be doctor's notes involved, which we don't, and psychiatry issues and things like that, that, that would recommend that maybe placed somewhere, and, and those are reasons that we can approve despite being overcrowded and different things like that too, depending on the situation.
So there, it, it really helps to have a lot of background knowledge in, in what our policies are, and, and, you know, always try to do what's best for the student, even if they don't know that it's best for them at the time.
Another reason why sometimes it is really beneficial that we keep the same school board member on for a while. Paul has been very gracious about putting it as a, as a highly, you know, I, I will do this, and I think it's, you're gonna start your third year on it. And I think when you bring that kind of history and you kind of know how you've done it, and I think you probably did it for almost your whole time, yeah. So, and that always is kind of hard, I mean, this is the first time I've really sat and really listened so intently to all of these, so I think it's really good for all of us, no matter when you become the board chair, or, you know, it's, you know, I should have had this two years ago.
These are meetings that there's notes taken, or, you know, it's all private confidential.
Yeah, yes.
And even later, it's one of those opportunities that we know, we have to figure out how can we inform the community better about the policy and the process and the practice when, you know, for our decisions are made, because it's, they're tough conversations, but we have policies for reason, and sometimes it's either misunderstood, or the feeling is, we should just allow the switches to happen, that there are some reasons why we don't allow certain transfer to happen. Specifically, any of our east side schools are already overcrowded, right? So if they're already overcrowded, then it's more likely that we're going to, I'm going to automatically deny it based on capacity, then the appeal process, then the, the appeal team, it makes a decision to either support what I've decided or overturn the decision, and I obviously take, I'd never take it personally, because it's, it's really a process, so we have to just do a better job of educating.
The committee makes, has the vote, and they, they make the decision, it doesn't fall on, and it shouldn't fall on whoever's gonna fill in your role too, if, if there's a tie or whatever, I mean, it, I think this is, that's one thing we should have a discussion about with this committee, is that the committee needs to work that out. It shouldn't, I, I don't think it should ever come back and fall on, at the final vote, if, if we're not all in agreement, Joe, that was the other one, I was trying to think, Joe, you know, where, whether we tune it to or something like that, and I just felt that that was not right, to put that vote on Kayla at that time. I'm glad we corrected that, but anyway.
There are, there are interesting things that come up too, I mean, like, you know, a student will wanna go to a certain school, but there may be restraining orders involved and.
may be, um, restraining orders involved and, and, you know, things, criminal, um, issues or, you know, outside influences that don't allow it. And it's, it's really, it, and that's the stuff that can be talked about in that confidential arena and stays there because, you know, you don't want to tarnish anybody's, um, you know, hopes and dreams. And it, it, those are, those are the really tough conversations. Because those are.
Can we move on?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make one comment. Uh, when we, when the former superintendent was doing kind of the similar meetings that you're doing, Think Kids, uh, a few years back, was when there was an education piece that was part of those meetings and it was to educate people on our transfer policy. And we also gathered a lot of information and made then some changes because of kind of gathering that information. I think we have an opportunity as board members because it's in our, our, um, our, the book you just held up.
Handbook.
Yeah, yeah. Our handbook to, to also educate people if this comes up in any fashion to say, well, make sure you know about our transfer policy and, you know, it's on page 20 or whatever. You know, so we have that opportunity to help with that education too and, um, but, you know, there may be other opportunities, uh, like, uh, Superintendent Grunds did a few years ago through these community meetings you're doing, if it's appropriate.
And thinking about our, our, our homeschool liaisons and things like that, so that we're getting it out to underserved populations, because I think sometimes policies like this sometimes tend to overly benefit people who have access and voice and sometimes underrepresent populations that, that, that don't, because, um, if you know how to, if you know how to get into this, this is. It's very important.
And last but not least is our Transportation Hazard Safety Committee, which, what is this?
And that's me again, and that's me again. And as a member of that committee, I want to thank Superintendent Magus for sending out the, uh, the well-deserved thank you to our transportation staff and the, the challenges that they've had to deal with, endure over the last couple of weeks, uh, from stuck buses to just getting people out there and getting kids to school safely. So, um, this, the committee meets as needed and, uh, I think I'm going to defer to you because they don't come by and pick me up to go for those rides home town. I wish they would, that'd be fun.
At 3:00 in the morning?
At 3:00 in the morning.
Oh, I'm up.
I didn't have to, but it was, uh, we, given that we have a new assistant manager, I wanted to make sure that he had additional support, uh, in the decision-making, and it was a really tough call today. But, uh, I also, in addition to thanking the, uh, transportation folks gave, gave a lot more thought about, we also have a lot of people doing a heck of a lot of shoveling and plowing, so we reached out to them, two decisions.
So that's what Transportation Hazard Safety Committee is, is?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it is. I haven't, I haven't been called.
About transportation and safety and hazards.
Remember, three.
So he's been up since 3:30, so maybe it's just not.
No, I, I hope he's not driving. He's not.
You can, you can spot as a former English teacher.
No, I'll probably be driving, but it'll be your, your toll, but yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Because you know Assistant Superintendent Bonds, yeah. But what is it? What is that? Do we ever meet?
I, I defer, I defer to the board chair.
I haven't been called a meeting.
I don't think, I don't, I don't recall ever having that.
Transportation Safety Committee, Anne Wasson is on it.
I'm sure.
You never did? Tom Casper did, um, Bill Westholm did, Sally Trinka did.
I do get text messages, people asking me if school will be open or closed.
Oh, you do?
But it's only because they've asked me to make the predictions for years and I, I am 100% like this year and I was 100% in 2022, so on my prediction, you know, before you make the call, I've already made the call.
Today was, today was an interesting one.
Yeah.
I, I told them, no, we're going to be there tomorrow.
Thank you, it was really.
Thank you.
I think this, and I, I didn't mean to make light of the, the time spent, but I, I, I think this is really good dialogue, really important work. I want to say thank you for the deep dedication that you serve.
Really, this has been nice. I, we've wanted this, you know, for a while, and so I appreciate when I saw that our agenda was a little bit lighter. Sorry about that.
We're not trying to cram six things and, uh, that's awesome.
Hey, wait a minute. We're, we're done before 7:00, so it's not bad.